Join us in our invocation, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, again we come to you confessing our sins and our wrongdoings, our shortcomings. We confess our own foolishness. We ask for your wisdom and your forgiveness. We ask that you would guide us in our thoughts and our words and our actions, that they would be pleasing to you. But part of the way that they would glorify you is they would encourage your people and that our decisions will be wisely made and effectively implemented. We thank you for our staff. We pray your blessing upon them this evening and for each one here. We ask it in Christ's name. Amen. Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is beautiful, wonderful, which is its sentence. One nation, in thy command, indivisible, with everything and justice.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments of this agenda from the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one adjustment, and this would be memo 15A. This will be the last administrative matter. This is a request to approve a sanitary sewer and pump station easement between Iredle County and BV Belk Jr.
Is that all you have, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any adjustments from any member of the board this evening?
I'd like to, under new business, discuss the article of paper this week about EMS response time.
Any other adjustments? If not, I would move we adopt this agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move directly to presentations of special recognitions and awards. We have a request for the Parks and Recreation to adopt a proclamation in memory of Mr. Odell Thomas. And I believe Vice Chairman Norman is going to handle this.
I want Mr. Tuttero and Ms. Hapler to please come up front. Ms. Hapler is Assistant Director of Recreation. Mr. Tuttero, of course, has worked at Odell for many years. I know Ms. Thaler could not be here this evening, but we've got a representative of her family here. Would you please come up front?
Whereas the Iredle County Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize its citizens who excel in special ways, and whereas special recognition for an individual is always a top priority with the county commissioners, and whereas the county commissioners would like to honor Mr. Odell Thomas posthumously for 47 years of service to the community, and whereas Mr. Thomas worked for the Iredle State School Schools as a teacher for 35 years at Union Grove Elementary School, and whereas Mr. Thomas dedicated his life to children and adults through 47 years of sports officiating for the citizens of Iredle County. And now therefore, the Iredle County Board of Commissioners hereby wishes to honor the life of Mr. Odell Thomas, and further wishes to express their gratitude for his years of service.
This time we'll move to our public hearings. At this time, we'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to a request from Malcolm Thompson to consider case number 1406-1, which is relevant to rezoning 4.66 acres at 104 Woodpecker Road, Olin, North Carolina, from residential agricultural to highway business. Mr. Todd, welcome, sir.
Good evening to the board. As was stated tonight, we have a request for a rezoning up on Tomlin Mill Road, the interchange of 77. The property in question is two parcels outlined in blue on the western side of 77. The request is to go from RA to straight highway business. The staff supports this request based on the following. The 2030 Horizon Plan calls for this area to be highway interchange commercial. The proposed district is consistent with previous approved rezoning requests in the area of the interchange, and potential traffic impact should not come close to the road This is the 2030 Horizon Plan showing that the parcel lies within the highway interchange Currently, the property is vacant and is just used as an agricultural field. You can see some of the adjacent commercial uses out there. You've got Lowe's Distribution to the east, a gas station, and then a farm supply facility. This is looking at the property. You can see the interstate in the background. Just another view of the subject property. This is looking south along Woodpecker Road. Property's on our left there. It's back toward the interchange with the interstate. Looking back over toward the gas station. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions, Mr. Todd? Okay, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? If you would, come forward and state your name for the record.
I just wanted, my name's Kenneth Ward. I just want to know how it's going to affect the veterinary hospital that's just been built there. Because it's right there.
Mr. Todd, you want to address that?
Yes, let me back up and show you a different image. Actually, the veterinary office that has just been built is on this property to the north of this site.
But it's on that road, right?
It is on Woodpecker Road, that's correct. So it does have that access on Woodpecker Road.
I don't know if this is going to affect, no, I just happen to see. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? If there's no one else, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and the floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend in favor of the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan.
Okay. Any discussion on Mr. Robertson's motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll again declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to a request from Roy Church to consider case number 1406-2 to rezone 25.8 acres across from 876 Tomlin Mill Road, Olin, North Carolina, from residential agricultural to general business district. Mr. Todd?
Yes, again, this request is back up on Tomlin Mill Road, just to the east of the interstate this time. Property that was just approved is this property over here. Property in question now is the 25 acres outlined in blue. Within the previous couple of months, the property directly across was approved to be rezoned to GB. So this request again is to rezone to a straight GB. Staff supports this request as well. Matches the 2030 Horizon Plan, calls for the area to be employment center, industrial flex office. Proposed districts consistent with previous approved rezoning requests in the area of the interchange, and potential traffic impact should not come close to the road capacity. The planning board did vote unanimously nine to zero to approve this request. Here's the 2030 Horizon Plan showing the employment center, industrial flex. Again, farther to the east is where the Lowe's Distribution Center is located. An aerial of the property. This is looking into the subject property. Let me back up. The backside of this property several years ago, there was a, what we call an LCID, land clearing inert debris landfill that was approved through the Board of Adjustment several years Just some pictures looking at the subject property. That's part of the LCID. Looking at one of the adjacent properties. This is back on Tomlin Mill Road, looking east, and then back looking toward the interstate. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
All right, any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Todd. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? If you would, come forward and state your name for the record, please. We'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Make the motion to recommend in favor of the zoning map amendment and to make in finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Halp. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to a request from Michael P. Eaton with SLF II, North Carolina Magnolia Bays LLC, to consider a release of rezoning and subdivision jurisdictions to the town of Mooresville. Mr. Todd?
The property in question, again, is outlined in blue on the map. You can see it's basically on the end of a small peninsula at Big Indian Loop. The red crosshatch area is already in Mooresville's ETJ, and the property outlined in blue is proposed to be part of an overall development that's tied in with what's already in Mooresville's ETJ. So the applicant's requesting that the piece be released to Mooresville so they can develop it consistently under Mooresville's zoning regulations.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? If you would, come forward and state your name for the record.
I'm Deborah Wasney, and my property adjoins the property in question to be rezoned. My question is, our property is at the south end of the blue line. We're adjoining this property. We don't have any objection to what Mr. Wood is proposing to build. My question is, is this going to somehow bring our property into the town of, into the Mooresville jurisdiction? Okay, when all of this property that was, that is now owned, the property in blue, that was, is now owned by AXS, which is the retirement community from Pennsylvania, when we went through all the rezoning meetings and everything years ago, they told us that if this property was rezoned from agricultural to multi-use or multifamily, which AXS had to have, and AXS had to have it brought into the Mooresville jurisdiction to be able to bring sewer and water out there. But if they did not build that retirement community, that the property would go back to the original zoning. It would revert back to the original zoning, and that whoever would then buy that property, they would have to go through all of the rezoning meetings to get that property rezoned again for multiple family. I do not know if that's ever been done. My question is, has that property, did it revert back to the original zoning from when the property was bought by AXS? And is there any chance that any other properties on Big Indian Loop would then be taken into the jurisdiction of Mooresville?
Could you speak to that, Mr. Todd?
To answer the first question is, your property will not fall into Mooresville's zoning jurisdiction. That's not to say it won't ever, but this request is solely focusing on the property outlined in blue. If any future request was to come about it, it would have to be either initiated by you or there'd be another public hearing process to go through. As far as the use of this, they're looking at adding approximately three lots. The main objective is to just to add additional shoreline to the development that's already in Mooresville's jurisdiction. And I think Dan Brewer is here with WSP Sales. He might be able to offer a little more information about the specific development that they're proposing.
Okay.
Well, I was just going to, isn't it true, or as a general rule, we do not grant ETJ requests if the property owners don't want it?
That is...
I don't ever remember that we've ever voted to give Mooresville jurisdiction over a property that the property owner didn't request it.
That is partially correct. Typically, the ones we see on a normal basis are requested by the actual property owner. There is a process you can go through for the town to solicit the release, but it's pretty cumbersome, and it's been a number of years since we've gone through that.
I just don't remember us ever doing it.
I can't think of the time.
Okay?
Yes, sir. If you would, state your name, please.
My name's Dan Brewer with WSP, where the engineer and survey are out of Mooresville, working on the Mooresville tract. To answer the questions that came up, the developer is purchasing the property from AXS, and this portion of the property will be developed as a low-density residential is what the plan is. It has to go back through town of Mooresville because the AXS retirement community had a high-rise multifamily building right where it says Tomahawk Lane, and those were, it was a conditional use permit, so any, those conditions stay with that property regardless, and it'll have to be rezoned. So this is part of the process. The waterfront section, this is part of a waterfront community, and it's just cleaning up the entire boundary to add the four acres to the entire tract.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
One last thing. We're having a neighborhood meeting next week, and I'll give her my card so she can come to that meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ma'am, does that satisfy your questions? Anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend that we release this parcel to Mooresville for ETJ.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Robertson to grant this request. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to administrative matters, and Mr. Smith, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Item A, which is memo number five, is also a request from the Planning Division, and this is a request to call for a public hearing for another release of jurisdiction to Mooresville.
Yes, this is very similar to the last one. You can see the hatched area in red is already Mooresville's jurisdiction. It's a proposed subdivision. They're proposing two houses per acre. That would include this. I think they're looking at five additional homes on this piece. And again, this is just the call for the public hearing on August 5th.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Todd? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to call for a public hearing on August 5th, 2014, at 7:00 PM.
Okay, we have a motion to approve a public hearing on August 5th from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Items B and C are both requests from our solid waste department, and they are both requests to accept grant funds for two existing programs, and Teddy Bowler is going to make those requests.
Good evening, Mr. Bowler.
The solid waste department is seeking approval to accept a grant to continue our abandoned mobile home program. There's a typo in this memo. It says we did 27 homes in the last grant period. Actually, we did 32, five with double Y's. The 27 was single Y's. The cost per unit was about $728. The previous grant was $25,000. The current grant that they're offering us, they cut to $16,000, but we're still anticipating doing about 21 to 22 homes on that, on the new grant.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Bowler? Not, floor is open for a motion. Motion to approve. Motion to approve comes from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Second one is a grant to expand our shingle recycling area. Right now, we have, running into difficulties trying to keep our shingles separated after they've been tested and shipping them off. And we're seeking, I think it was $16,000. The state office, there's $8,000.
Any questions? Floor is open for a motion. Motion approved. Motion to approve from Commissioner Halp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
The next two items, D and E, are from our purchasing division, and Dean Lael will make those requests. The first is for a surplus declaration, and the second is for a lease request.
Good evening.
Evening.
The county currently has 19 vehicles that have been replaced because they're economically unserviceable. According to the county's parameters, the vehicle services manager has provided a list, and I believe you should have that identifying and briefly describing the vehicles. We are requesting the board declare the vehicles to be surplus and to grant me the authorization to be able to sell the vehicles at public online auction, at gov deals, or other best option as authorized by North Carolina General Statute. Proceeds from the sale will be returned to the fund from which they're bought, whether it be general fund or enterprise fund.
Any questions, Mr. Lael?
You know, we always ask these questions just because on the surface, you know, something doesn't kind of pass the smell test. A lot of these vehicles are of high mileage, and, you know, I remember the days when we replaced vehicles with a lot lower mileage on it, but I think most vehicles are more reliable now than, and they last longer. However, on here, we've got a Nissan 350Z and a Crown Vic, and one's got $126,000, the other one $132,000. And for the most part, we, for regular vehicles, I mean, I understand vans are a different category, but we've not surplus vehicles with, you know, under 150,000 miles on it. What prompted those three? Do you know?
According to the notes, if I'm looking at the same one you're looking at, the Crown Vic with $132,000 is wrecked and total lost vehicle.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Cannot be rebuilt. And the Nissan Sentra, they've had a lot of problems with transmission, with some of the gearworks, that they continually have to pour more and more money into the vehicle.
Okay, so it's almost like just one of those snake bit cars, then?
Yes, sir.
That's a two-seat sports car.
Yeah.
I don't know that thing looked real good riding around with a county emblem on the side of it.
I believe that was actually used in narcotics or one of the sheriff's departments.
Okay.
It kind of slides a little bit easier.
It's probably bought that way, too. But, okay. All right. Any other questions?
All right, thanks. We appreciate the fact that y'all are getting as many miles as you can out of every single vehicle.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next item I have is a lease for the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, the Juvenile Justice Division. We have provided these, this state agency space since 1998, or before 1998 is the last lease I have in file. We've rented 2,250 square feet for this department. We've paid 1,450 a month since the beginning of the lease, which included utilities. The current lease is on a month-to-month basis, and the juvenile has outgrown this space, and they expect more staff addition in the upcoming year, which will push their space needs to 3,600 to 3,800 square feet. The space they're in now is also in bad need of renovations. That can't be done while they occupy it. This would mean that if we pursue the renovations or ask the owner to pursue them, we would have to temporarily relocate the agency, which would cost us relocation expense, rent for temporary space, and either upfront or lease financed renovation costs. Even if we were to take this tack, the county would still have to find an additional 1,300 to 1,400 square feet to lease, buy, or provide for this agency and outfit. County staff has looked at several options over the years, and until now, we've not been able to find any adequate space that we wouldn't have to outfit and either pay for through upfront costs or through a leased financed option. However, recently, we did find 3,700 square foot of office space available in the city center, which is just across the street, Center Street. The space, as it sits now, adequately meets the agency's current and the future needs without any additional outfit cost to the county. The owner and I negotiated the cost of the rent to $3,105.75 per month on a five-year lease, which includes utilities and janitorial. The lease can be renewed annually at the end of the five-year term. Juvenile Justice has seen the property. It is actually located on two separate floors. They find it to be adequate, and they can run their services through that without any issues and problems, and we will not have to outfit any of the space. Iredle County's fiscal year 2015 court's budget includes the 1,450 per month for space with utilities, leaving a $19,870 shortfall. We have also added to this request budget amendment number two, which will encumber the additional money needed if approved. One note that isn't taken up in your agenda, I apologize for that, is that the county is also currently paying about $290 a month for janitorial services for the space they're in now. Since it's included in the new lease, we no longer have to pay that, so that's going to save an additional $3,400 per year. So that brings that shortfall down, actually, to $16,389 per year. County staff does recommend approval of both the lease and budget amendment number two, and request signature on the lease, which will make it effective August 1st. If approved, the clerk does have copies of the lease for the board chair's signature. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. We'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any question, Mr. Lael?
I have a suggestion, not a question to him. I'm in favor of a budget amendment and to authorize the additional expenditure. But we, the commissioners have a contingency fund. And in my mind, this expense should come out of our contingency fund. That's the contingency fund for the budget. And the fund balance should be left alone. Fund balance is our savings account. So I would like to just modify the budget amendment if we could so that this comes out of our contingency fund and not from the fund balance, if that will please the Board.
Can I add? Totally agree. I did not, Susan and I talked about this a while back. And the timing on this, as you'll see in my notes, was just not real good, but we've been working on it for so long. I didn't really want to tie your hands out of contingency right out of the chute. So if you're fine with that, then that's okay with us by all means. But I wanted to let you know why.
Been on this board a long time. I don't think we've ever spent our whole contingency, which it ends up rolling into fund balance anyway. I just...
As a matter of budgetary discipline, I agree with your logic. I'll support the motion. When this thing first came up, $9.50 a square foot, still a pretty high price rent. And I'm not, I understand the effort that was made to try to find something. And this board actually directed the staff to try to find a piece of property we could buy because you could pay for a pretty nice piece of property for that kind of rent. But they found a shortage of property around this square footage in an acceptable area. But I'll support this request, but I would like to request that the staff continue to look for a piece of property. If something like this comes up again, perhaps if we're not under such a compressed timeframe, we could save some money in the future. But $9.50 in this zip code is still a little stiff. That's my opinion. But I understand the compressed timeframe you're in. That's why I'm not going to be difficult about it. But I think we'd order to continue to do that. Okay.
Ron, would the owner be willing to do like a shorter lease with an automatic renewal by the county at the rate in case we found something in less time than five years and wanted to buy it? Without breaking the lease?
I'd have to defer to Dean on that one.
One of the spaces has been recently renovated, recently being within the last two years or so and then kept up to date. According to the owner, she's at about the right price. She would need to be four or five-year lease. I'll be more than happy to discuss a three-year lease with her. But to address the board chair's comment about the lease, it is rather expensive. However, the other properties we found in this area are ranging anywhere between $11 and $17 per square foot per year. And that is prior to any renovations that they might do to accommodate us. As far as rental with the utilities and janitorial, this actually brings the price...
Makes it a little less, yeah.
Brings it actually a little bit down, yes, sir. But I would be more than happy to try to discuss it with the owner and see if she'd be willing to come down to a three-year.
No, I don't think so in this sense. I mean, you've done your due diligence, that was my point. And with it including utilities and janitorial, I think that helps a little bit.
All right, thanks, sir.
You know, just as a rule of thumb, if you intend to be in a location much over seven years, it's wiser to buy.
I agree.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve.
The lease and budget amendment two.
Okay, and that money's going to come from?
From our contingency fund.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lael.
The next two items, F and G, are both from the Health Department. The first is for approval of revisions to the fee policy, and the second is a request approval of Budget Amendment Number Three. Jane Murray will make those requests.
Good evening. The first item is a request to approve revisions to the fee policy as well as our fees for clinical services, dental, and environmental health. These were approved by the Board of Health at the June meeting, and you'll see the policy change recommendations in red. Our clinical and dental fees were based upon the volume of services to cover both direct and indirect costs. And our environmental health fees, we looked at the actual costs. We looked at staff time, direct and indirect time, including travel, supplies, vehicle costs. Concerns I did want to share with you based upon discussion in our Board of Health meeting. If you look at the environmental health fees, there are three items starred at the bottom. And these are fees that are capped and set in law that we cannot change. And those are the restaurant plan review, the temporary food establishment permitting, and the limited food establishment. And when we did look at our actual costs, we're losing a considerable amount of money on those three, and that was a concern by the Board of Health. And Commissioner Johnson wanted it mentioned that, for example, the restaurant plan review, when we looked at our cost to do that with someone's establishment, a new restaurant, the hours we would spend reviewing the plan, visiting the establishment, making sure everything's done appropriately, it's close to $460 would be our cost. And that's capped at the state at 250. For the temporary food establishments, those would be special events. They can, they're permitted 21 days a year. They can function maybe at the balloon festival. Our cost there was $282. And then the concession stands would be the limited food establishments like at football games, and our cost was around $282. So that was a concern that Commissioner Johnson wanted me to make sure that I mentioned to you that these are things that are out of our control. We know our costs are higher, but it's set, and we can't, we cannot raise those fees.
I think we talked about that. Let's see, Brady's here. I think one of those fees has been 11 years since the state had adjusted that. Is that right? And the other one was, the other two were like seven and eight years, something like that. My concern was the cost of performing this service continues to escalate, and we're capped, we're just going to keep subsidizing it. And it's been the policy of the county for some time, whether it's building inspections, environmental health, or whatever, those should be self-funded. And this is a deviation from that policy. So I would... Ms. Murray, would it be a presumption on my part to perhaps have your staff craft the letter since you're more acquainted with the mechanics of this thing? And you folks craft the letter and send it to our clerk, and we'll send the letter to our legislative delegation, ask them to take a look at it.
We'll be glad to do that. And Brady and I wanted a little more opportunity. He's new in the director role. Within the next six months, we'll be looking at the fees again. I think he wanted that opportunity to really work with staff to see when we do this evaluation. As you said, we want to try to at least cover our costs in the best way we can. So in six months or so, we may be back and saying in some of these areas, we are low, and we probably need to look at the fees.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you. I mean, this, when I first came on the board, one of my first assignments was on the Board of Health, and Donna Campbell, you know, we, at that time, we started trying to recoup or at least set our fees so that we could take full advantage of the Medicaid reimbursement rates and stuff like that. But the public needs to know that by keeping the fees appropriate with the level of service, it actually enables us to offer a wider variety of services. And it's worked out. The dental clinic has worked out. You know, this strategy has been successful. So I appreciate your enthusiasm and your desire to continue it. And I think that's going to keep the Health Department financially sound. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And remember, a lot of these clients, it's a sliding fee scale, so they may end up at zero pay. If you see $300, they may pay 20.
Okay. So any other questions? If not, the floor is open for a motion to approve this fee schedule.
Make a motion to approve the fee schedule.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Halt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The second item is a grant that we just found out about about a week ago, and it's money flowing through the Department of Public Health through the CDC, a community transformation grant for $2,500 specifically for Project Lazarus, which is a local coalition. It's all across the state, and Arde County does have a coalition to prevent deaths due to accidental prescription drug overdoses. And Fifth Street Ministries is the fiscal agent for our local coalition, and they would like to purchase intranasal mucosal atomization devices to be given to first responders to use if an individual overdoses hydrocodone. What happens or morphine is your respiratory system shuts down, and there's a drug, naloxone, that if we can get it to you within a matter of minutes, in essence, you come back to life. That's why it's called Project Lazarus. So we would like to purchase those kits. The drug, the narcant or naloxone, we'll look at other avenues to explore to purchase that. But the kit is just a little device that you would hook the medication on, and it would be put in the nose. It also could be administered through injection in the muscles or IV. But what we would do for first responders is the nasal device. So it really is, we've got statistics and data, and you would probably be surprised, we were when we were, have been educated, this is a huge public health initiative, to find out if you look at the state of North Carolina, the dark colors, Arde County has one of the highest rates of drug overdose, accidental drug prescription overdoses. So certainly, we have, we're concerned. It is a public health issue, and we just ask for support of that grant for the money to flow through to Project Lazarus.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Murray? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item, which is H, is a request from the Finance Department to introduce the bond order, file sworn statement of debt, and call for a public hearing on August 5th, 2014.
Thank you. Included in your package tonight are proceedings that were crafted by Kristen Banco, our bond counsel with Womble, Carlisle, Sandrogin, Rice. And Kristen is here in the back if you should have any questions regarding the form. I would like to say that the bond order also includes a statement of total estimated interest pursuant to the Local Government Bond Act as amended. This is a new document that we're required to file that specifically states the estimated interest. Of course, we don't know for sure what it is until bonds would sell because that's the date the interest rate is set. But the estimated, based on the flow that we projected of four separate issues, would be $85,837,500. That's specifically outlined. Also included is the Finance Director, my sworn statement of debt, which is a requirement of the Local Government Bond Act. If the entire 163,500 is issued, it would be slightly under 1% of the county's assessed value. This is just bonded debt in which the full faith and credit of the county is pledged. But included in the proceedings is the order authorizing 151,500,000 in school bonds. I'll be glad to read this for you if you want me to. Depends on, that's up to you, what you would like.
I did have one question, Ms. Blumenthal.
Okay.
On, one, two, three, four. I believe it's on the fifth page. County of Arde, North Carolina, sworn statement of debt may pursue it to the Local Government Bond Act as amended. Says outstanding debt evidence by the bond, and you've got the '97 issuance to 2006, the 2006 again, and 2008, 38 million. It comes to 201,610. Is it our intent to restructure this debt and incorporate it in with the 163,500, or is this just the total amount of the bonded debt that we intend to have?
That's the total amount of the bonded debt. The 38,110 is outstanding. And I just, I have to provide this statement of what our expectation is with the 163,500.
Yeah, okay. I just wasn't quite sure what you meant by that earlier.
But we should never hit that point because we're not going to issue the debt anytime, you know, immediately. So that 38 million is going to go down. In fact, the 1997, that comes off in 2017, right?
That's correct.
So in 2017, that's gone, and then we're not going to put on, in fact, that community college bonds don't come on for four years. Four years after, four years. So it, you know, just so when people see the 200 number that they're not alarmed, we should never hit that threshold.
That's, that's correct.
As if we barred everything this afternoon.
That's correct. Because we have to show what the bond orders would allow us and would, to issue and would be effective upon approval of the voters. So if you're so inclined, one commissioner will need to introduce the bond order.
What is the wording? I'm sorry.
Do we need to read each one, one, two, three, and four?
I don't think we have to read them.
Okay.
Unless you just want us to...
Which one needs to be read?
This.
We don't have, just the title.
Okay, so I can make them, I'll make the motion that we proceed with the introduction of bond order, file sworn statement of debt, and call for a public hearing on August 5th, 2014. Will that motion carry? I mean...
Susan, I think, Susan, I think...
I'm reading it. The bond order itself includes those separate items. So... What we need is for the order entitled Order Authorizing 151,500,000 in School Bonds, a motion to introduce that order.
Okay, I'll make the motion to introduce an order authorizing 151,500,000 school bonds.
You need to call for a vote.
I've had agonizing process once before. I said, I said earlier, I know when I'm whipped. I'm not going to make this difficult. And we say we're not going to do it all at once. But if the thing goes sideways, this economy goes sideways, remember. You heard it here. When a few snowflakes in January and February causes your economy to shrink 2.9%, your economy is not healthy. Okay, be careful. Okay. Okay. That's my mini temper tantrum. I'll shut up now. Okay. So...
I think we all share your reservation, Chairman Johnson.
Hmm?
I said I think we all share the same reservation.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else we...
We need a second introduction of the bond order authorizing $12 million in community college bonds.
Okay.
I make that motion.
A motion from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And just to follow through with the proceedings, the part of this is that the board designates me, the Director of Finance Administration, to file this sworn statement of debt with the clerk, which you all have, and that the bond orders are to be filed with the Local Government Commission. The clerk to the board is to maintain the sworn statement of debt and for the board to call for a public hearing on August 5, 2014 at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Okay, so you need a motion to call for a public hearing?
Please.
Okay.
Make a motion, we call for a public hearing, August 5, 2014 at 7:00 PM.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I believe that's all we have to do tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item I is a follow-up to our winter planning retreat back in February. And at the retreat, you had instructed the staff to negotiate or choose an architect to move forward on the design of the jail, the proposed jail expansion. And $1.5 million was moved in an effort to, to allow us to do that. I apologize that it's taken so long to get to this point, but because of the cost of the design project, we've had to go out for requests for qualifications, and we had six architects that responded, or firms that responded, and we decided just to interview each one. They were all, had good experience, very closely qualified. And through that process, it just took some time, took the extra step of, before coming back to the board, went ahead and got a contract from the, from the chosen architect, which was Mosley, who you are familiar with, and negotiated the contract, which mirrors the amount that was presented in February. And based on the contract, I've, I've met with several members of our staff to cover every aspect of this, from the construction to the procurement to legal and on down the line. Everyone is in favor and thinks that this is a good contract. So, on the face of this, I would recommend that, because this is a good contract, because we've gotten everything that we've needed, I would recommend that you approve the contract. However, back in June, you chose to identify a committee to take a look at some methods in which to hopefully bring down the population of the jail and through, through different measures. And that committee has not, has not come back with any recommendations as of yet. And I think that that could have some, depending on what those are, it could have some bearing on the design of the jail. And, you know, if you choose to move forward with that, and probably should not move forward at this point until we find out what those recommendations are, if you agree with me. Judge Joe Crosswhite is here tonight, and he is prepared, if you have any questions, to give some input on the goings-on and what's been happening so far with that committee, if you, if you so choose to bring him up.
Has the committee met?
I think they've met two times.
Yes, sir. I can, I can address that if you, if you'd like to. We've, we've had two meetings.
Why don't you come on up and...
And I, and I call you out. We have, first of all, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to take a look at it. I know this has been a hard decision for everybody involved, and it involves a lot of expenditure. So, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to look at it. The committee has met. The first meeting was several weeks ago. At that point, we identified the people that we needed to have on the committee. We tried to get everybody involved that was a stakeholder. And we, at that point, laid out some preliminary ideas to kind of identify some of the issues that we thought could address some of the problems. We divided it into three different areas. We divided them into immediate goals, things that we could look at immediately, sort of the low-hanging fruit, the things that we could go after that could eliminate some numbers up front. We looked at short-term goals, and these are recommendations that we think could be done within the next 90 days to six months. And then we looked at some long-term goals, which were from six months to a year. We assigned everybody a responsibility for each one of those goals. We let them go out and we gave them a couple of weeks to kind of research it, to drill down. We met again last, last Tuesday, and we preliminarily came up with some suggestions. We, we identified the ones that we thought were the most appropriate. As far as the immediate goals, we put some of those into operation as of yesterday, and they will continue through this week, and then we're going to meet back next week and kind of review how they go. And at that point, that will be our third meeting, and I think at that point, we're in a position to actually have researched this, to have tried some of these, and to be in, be in a position to make recommendations back to the committee at that point. So, that's where we stand. We've had, had two meetings on it. We have a preliminary memorandum that does lay out some plans that we think might help reduce the overcrowding issue without impacting public safety. We're going to try some of those, like I said, the immediate plans in the next week or two, and then meet back. And at that point, we'll be in a position to make a formal report to the commission on what, what we think might be some ideas that, that you should consider as far as ways to reduce overcrowding.
So, would 60 days, if we tabled this for 60 days or 90 days, be sufficient to give you time to get some results potentially back to us?
I, I think the, the immediate goals that we've identified, we should have something on those pretty quickly, within the next month or two. Some of the longer-term goals that, that potentially would require some expenditures by the commission, and I've not identified those. It would take probably 90 days to get those up and operational. If you decide to adopt those, it might take a little bit longer to see if they're going to be productive. I think, I think 90 days is a good starting point. 60 days, we could certainly have something back to you by then to see if it's beneficial. But if you do elect to consider some of those intermediate-range goals, it might take a little bit longer just because of the time it's going to take to get some of those up and operational. But I do think we could have something back to you in about the next 60 days.
Okay. Judge, I guess the question I got is, do you have any idea how many inmates in the jail would be impacted by this?
Yes, sir. We, when, the last time we met, Captain Connolly, who was the representative on there from the jail, indicated that there was a population in the jail at that point of 238. He said there were 14 inmates in Rowan County. The number he gave us, if, if the number could be reduced to 236, that he thought he could get everybody back from Rowan County. Now, those numbers are a moving target based on who's in, what they've been committed, the crimes they've been committed. This week, I know we've run two courts very hard. We've had District Court and Superior Court. District Court today had 450, District Court yesterday had 350, Superior Court this week had about 725. So, those numbers in the jail are going to go up because people are being processed through the system. They'll come down toward the end of the week. I guess to answer your question, I think probably between some of the recommendations we're making, I think you could see potentially a 10% to a 20% reduction. And that, that is not just my number to you. Some of the recommendations we made are what other counties are doing. Union County, for example, we, we've talked to them in great detail. Some of the other counties in our division, we've talked with them, and those are the numbers that they are reporting to us as well. So, there's some basis for those numbers, how well they actually translate to Arndale County, I guess would yet to be seen. But, but there, there is some precedence for how, how many might be impacted by that.
You write in your statement, it's a moving target. Like, today, they had a pretty, pretty eventful weekend.
They did. Well, it, it's not an eventful weekend, and it's an eventful two days in court because the court, our Superior Court, for the last 10 weeks, it's been blocked with two trials. One was an eight-week murder trial that, that held up Superior Court for eight weeks, and then the other was a two-week sex offense trial. So, a lot of those people that were unable to get to court during that time, we've, they've been on this time, and they're processing them. And those are people that are getting active sentences, that are being held in the jail right now, waiting to be moved on to somewhere in the Department of Corrections outside of Arndale County, or they're either probation violations that are serving parts of their sentence or bonds, people that have been sent with bonds or warrants that have been issued recently. So, anytime you have, anytime you have activity like we've had over the last two days, those numbers will certainly go up. And that's part of the recommendation we've made, is to identify ways to kind of process some of the, the lower offenders, to try to get them processed quicker while at the same time protecting them with all their constitutional rights.
Well, I mean, for instance, it is a moving target. The annex in the downtown jail, tonight, we're sitting about 280 between them. We got down as low as 14 last week in Salisbury. We're at 20 now, and they anticipate that could go to 30 next week.
Right.
So, but what...
And I, I think you're going to see that ebb and flow depending on the activities of a court. Like, like I said, in the last two days, we've had over 1,500 people in court, and many of those people got active sentences. So, they're being held in the jail right now while they can be processed into other facilities. So, you're going to see an increase in that.
The, the, the point I'm driving at, though, if we see 10% to 20% reduction, at what point, i- is that going to be steady, or we're going to continue to see fluctuations? And if we are, you're going to have to find out what that meeting is. And here, here's honest to goodness, what continues to concern me about the discussion of the jail. No one talks about the aspect of the jail that is the most stressed part of the jail. And it's not the cell block, folks, it's the core facility. If you had 280 prisoners between the annex and the downtown jail, and then you have to feed some of the staff because they're there doing meals and they can't leave, those poor ladies in that jail are cooking 900 meals a day, and you can't cuss a cat in that kitchen without getting fur in your mouth. I don't know how they do it. And, and God help some poor nurse in that infirmary if some maniac on drugs gets a hold of her because she's got nowhere to go. And in the laundry room, that laundry equipment runs around the clock.
Well, and I, I want you to understand, those are things that are sort of beyond what I think...
But the point, the point I'm driving at is, unless we're going to... I, I don't want to create the perception that we're going to avoid the construction of a jail if we drop the population to 10% to 20%. I, I just don't see that happen. And I think we've got to be realistic and, and fair about that. We can't continue to ask those people that work there to work there in those conditions. I, I, and I'm not trying to be heaven knows me, you know? I'm probably the most unemotional guy that ever sits up here. I mean, I...
Well, I think, to answer your first question, you're always...
Those people do an unbelievable job over there.
They do. They absolutely do.
Unless you've been through there, you don't understand what they go through.
They absolutely do. And I think you're always going to see an, an ebb and flow. You're going to see an increase, you're going to see a decrease based on what's going on. So, your numbers will absolutely change daily. I think what we're doing is we're just trying to see, once we implement these various programs, what a realistic number is, and then let the commission make a decision on what is the appropriate use of county resources.
Okay.
You know, the county's going to grow, the county's continuing to grow. Courts and jails continue to remain stressed. It's something that needs to be, be looked at. And I certainly have trust in the county commission to look at all aspects of that. But I think our job is to do everything we can to try to fulfill the requests from the board, to look at ways we can assist in jail overcrowding without affecting public safety, and then give a number that you guys can, can base any decisions you need on. I don't think our problem, or our, our concern is to fix it. I don't think we can ever fix a population when a county is growing the way we're growing. I think our goal is to give you numbers that, that you can make informed and realistic decisions on.
Well, I just, I don't want to sit here a year from now still contemplating build a jail and, you know, they put an injunction on Korean steel the other day. The next day, US steel prices jumped 12%.
Yes, sir.
There's going to be a lot of steel in that building. And, you know, I don't want to see a 20, a jail that can be built for 23 million and all of a sudden go to 24 and a half or whatever.
And I think your efforts also are intended to, in the meantime, figure out something that would help alleviate that overcrowding while we decide and do our due diligence to figure out. I don't think any of us disagree, there's going to have to be a facility. It's just how big and, and that kind of thing that needs to be discussed.
Right.
But I think that's the intent also, to figure out something to assist in that overcrowding.
Right. But I think that's the only way anybody can make an informed decision, is to get all the players involved. Let them, let everybody do what they can to assist in the process, and then leave it up to the five of you to make the best informed decision you can. And that's all we're doing, is we're looking at ways, and we're going to make recommendations on ways, things that we can do to eliminate some of the overcrowding. And, and some of the recommendations, like I said, are things that we can implement without any increased funding. Others are things that we might come to you and we might, we might ask to see if the county would be willing to spend money to try certain programs, and, and see if that might be an alternative to what you're, what you're looking at. So, that's all our goal is, to be involved in the process, not to, not to fix it, but to help you guys manage it and give the five of you a realistic number so you can make an informed decision.
Are you going, are you going to be able to present us, if, if we move towards some programs such as this, are you going to be able to provide us an annualized cost of the pro, program and the number of inmates that'll be involved in the program so we can make some evaluation of it as far as the cost effectiveness of the program?
I think we can provide you with projections, and that can be based on, in part, what we do and in part, what other counties have saved by implementing some of these programs.
But I'm, I'm not fussing. We, just to help all due respect, we've been deciding for three years.
And I understand, but we've only been involved in the process the last two months, not even that. And, and I, I think if we would have been involved earlier in the process, we, we would be further along down the road as well, so...
Well, I'm, I'm going to work with you, but I'm not going to ask those ladies to cook 900 meals a day much longer in that kitchen.
Well, I don't think anybody should have to, should have to do that much.
Mr. Chairman, Ron, have we looked into other alternatives to alleviate some of that kitchen stuff? Have you looked into outside sources and to, you know, contracting with some, to help with his concerns? Has that, I, I'm late in the game in this, but has that been looked into?
In this context, no. I can't really speak for Bert Connolly over at the jail. Bert, Bert may very well have, but we haven't really looked at that through this process.
They used, who's the company?
Aaron Mark.
They used them at one time. It didn't work out well.
If, if I can, Mr. Chairman, the, well, the, the average population of our jail has actually gone down. So, all these situations that you described were worse last year this time, or, or last year, on average, on average, okay? I think there's two issues at hand here. Number one is we've got a committee that's active, finally. They're, you know, or, excuse me, as soon as you were appointed and commissioned, so to speak, y'all became active and you've met, and, and they've got a short-range plan and a, and somewhat a, a little bit, when I say longer, I mean, you said it would take you a couple of months to make some recommendations for cer, for some of the, some of your recommended actions that may require money, and then it would take several months after that to see the results. So... results. So, even, even the, even if you're looking at the longest timeframe here, it looks like we're looking at five or six months before we kind of know what the, what the final effect of, of your committee's recommendations could be. So, to me, that's an unknown, that's an unknown. The other part is, we've got the state debating whether or not we're going to hold prisoners with sentences of two, you know, of two years or less. That is a great unknown. And, and before we, before we pay a million and a half dollars for somebody to come up with a jail, I, I would like for those two unknowns to be known. So, I'm, at this point, I'm not prepared to ask for us to go ahead and sign a contract and spend the money. I'm willing to wait a few more months, not years, and so that everybody understands, I do expect that we will have to do something. That, I, I have no expectations, and I've not heard anybody on this board state that they, that they believe there's an expectation that at the end of this, that we will decide to do nothing. So, we know that we've got to do something. It's just a matter of, you know, can we define it a little bit better? And if I could, just to make sure that there's no misunderstanding about this, your committee was, was tasked to come up with recommendations that would not endanger public health. So, at no ti, I, I just want to go on record here. At no time has your, has your committee recommended that we do anything that would, that would early release, pre-trial release, a murderer, correct?
No, sir.
A rapist?
No, sir.
A child molester?
No, sir.
An ax murderer?
No, sir.
None of that stuff. It, it would only be for people that if they were found guilty by, by the state law, they would not go to jail, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And just, just to, to reemphasize that, you know, as, as much as I love Arden County, as much as this has been my home, my obligation is to public safety and the citizens of the state of North Carolina. You know, by the nature, we work with people sometimes, sometimes that are highly dangerous, but it is never our intention to do anything to jeopardize the public safety of Arden County or North Carolina. I do want to thank everybody, the commission in particular, for giving us this opportunity to look at it, and thank, thank you for letting us be a part in this. Thank you for letting us play a role in this, so.
And is your, excuse me, is, is your intent, the programs and, and ideas you're going to come up with now, may be able to be used prolonged over years and tweaked, you know, to assist us in keeping populations down even after a new facility will be built?
Yes, sir, I think. And one of the things that Commissioner Robertson mentioned was a pre-trial release program, and I know some, I know that's something that's had a lot of conversation in, in a lot of different formats. That's not even necessarily anything. I anticipate it might be a recommendation. I don't know if it will. I do know Alexander County's been running one for 20 years with great success. The numbers that that, Davie County's been running one with great success for about that long as well. So, out of the, the 10 counties in our judicial division, eight have a pre-trial release program that they've been running for many, many years. You know, a, a, again, I'm not saying that will be a recommendation, but I certainly think that's something the commission, if their, their desire is to reduce inmate population without impacting public safety, that's something that has worked in, in 80% of the other counties in our division, and it, it seems to have worked well in those. So, you know, if that is a recommendation we make, then that's all we'll do, is we'll make it as a recommendation. I'll give you the best information we can. I'm not advocating either for or against it. I'll let you to make the decision if that's how you want to allocate your funds. But all I can do is give you suggestions on things that have worked other places that will, that will impact the jail population.
I think we all agree, there's a, a need for changes in facility, but, but I just want to get it right. You know, where it's a, where it's a, I'll use the word proactive again, to where it's a long-term use for, you know, 20 or more years for this county so we don't have to, you know, because I think this particular facility didn't extend to capacity as long as, as we thought it, or at the time they thought it would have. And nobody can foresee that. But I just want to make sure we get it right for the taxpayers too.
And I understand, and I think that's what we all do. And I think what you're doing now is a step in, in a positive direction by getting everybody involved in it. So, and again, I just want to reiterate, the court's appreciation and the bar's appreciation for having an opportunity to at least take a look at this for you guys.
I mean this in no way disrespectful at all, Judge Crosswhite, but, you know, you indicated you've gotten all the stakeholders together, and these stakeholders have been involved with the court system for years. And you guys have known the jail's been an issue for many, many years. And the stakeholders see the problem daily. It's a shame that you had to be commissioned to start looking for solutions. These stakeholders that are in this process, they have a stake, they have a, they have a, a very large stake in this. And you, you see it there, there every day. I just, the frustration is, the, the governing body that controls the money had to say, do something. And we had to say, we're going to spend money, before the people who are involved every day said, oh, wait, 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 timeout, maybe we can do better. There's got to be, if there's a problem, and we know it's a problem, the people that are involved daily need to be more vocal about saying, you know, we can do something, rather than sitting back and waiting until we say, you know, we're going to build a jail, we're going to spend the money. And then, everybody gets a little, it's, this, we need to do a better job. And this can be a model for other areas in the county, but, I mean-
Well, everybody needs to do a better job, I think, you know. And I know, I know Sarah Kirkman, the district attorney's office, they, last year, they closed 120% of the criminal cases. So, they moved and closed 20% more cases than were filed, than were brought in. So, you know, and they're doing that with less funding, I think, when, when everybody is adding funding. I know that the, the law enforcement agencies, they have, they have added law enforcement, both, you know, I, you know, here and in Mooresville, the Highway Patrol. So, the numbers for the law enforcement goes up, which means there's more tickets, more citations, more warrants being issued. Unfortunately, the courts, the administrative office of the courts has allocated 3% of the state budget. So, we've lost people. We, we have been, we are authorized to have six district court judges, and we've only had five. I know the clerk's office is underfunded by four or five people. The district attorney's office is underfunded by that amount as well. So, um-
But my point is, is we're now looking for these solutions now, and those conditions are the same as they were. And it's no judgment call, and it's not meant in any disrespect whatsoever. It's just a shame that, you know, we are at the point that we need to do something, and now we're suddenly looking for solutions. And this has been a, a critical mass for a while. The jail's been overpopulated for a while. I've been on the board four years, it's been overpopulated for four years.
Right. It was now brought to our attention that, that, sort of the issues they had with some of these inmates in Rowan County and things like that. And that's what I'm saying. I think we can help.
I hope so.
I think one of the problems that we, as a county, have been operating in is, everybody, they get in their little stove pipes and they don't, they don't cross-communicate. I think that goes countywide. I think this is a great opportunity to get everybody talking, and hopefully, together, we can come up with some solutions for it. So, I certainly agree with your recommendations. I think it's something that we all can look at as well. So, thank you for saying that.
Yeah. Let, let me say this. One thing that, that needs to happen over there, Judge, nobody in the jail believes anything anybody in the courthouse says. And nobody in the courthouse believes anything anybody in the jail says. That's not my fault, that's just my observation. And you go to the courthouse and they say, well, they're inflating the numbers in the jail. Damn it, I just left the jail, it's crowded in there. And, I mean, how much effort does it take to walk 60 feet into the jail and see the jail's crowded?
Well, I-
And there's, you, when you said they're in their silos, they're, they're sure right.
Well, you know, I will-
They don't even trust one.
I will say this, I'm not, I'm not sure necessarily where that's coming from, but the people that we've worked with in the jail, Captain Connolly has been a great asset to this board. I know Darren Campbell has been very supportive of everything. So, the, the people that I'm dealing with, I, I don't have anything but praise to say about those people. I think, you know, Captain Connolly made some great suggestions on things that he thought might help with the situation as well. So, I-
Well, I, I'm just saying, I've been in a position kind of like you, and sometimes, you know, over 20 years, there's been a lot of times I've gone to that South Conference ring over there with two groups of knuckleheads and closed the doors, says, look, guys, nobody's going home. Till we come to an agreement. And maybe that's what it takes.
Yes, sir.
You just get a bunch of knuckleheads together and you-
But, but what I don't want to do, is, is I want to cure any, and I'm not sure where that information comes from, but there is absolutely no animosity, at least that I'm aware of, between the courts and the jail. And if, if Captain Connolly, he called me this afternoon, if he gives me a number, I mean, I have great faith in that number. I have great faith in his service to the county. So, and hopefully, hopefully, if I tell him something, he, he has the same faith as well. I certainly can't speak for everybody in the system, but I know my experience in dealing with the jail has been nothing but positive, and I don't have anything but positive comments to say about those individuals.
Well, I, I, I don't want the little folks to get lost in this. The staff at that jail, they're the ones bearing the burden of inaction. Those are the people, were, they're working in bad conditions over there. And my number one priority as, as a, personally as a commissioner, is the public safety. And the second is the safety of the staff. The staff's safety is jeopardized to some degree because that's their job. They put themselves in that position, and thank God for them. But you have to do as much to minimize that as you can. And unless you make a significant dent in that jail population, you're not going to seriously diminish that problem. Because it, it, I've been in there three times in the last two months, and it's bad in there, folks. It's bad. And it's not, it's not because the place is nasty, they keep it very clean. It's, it's the core facility of that jail is way too small for the population you're trying to serve. And it is very stressful on those people over there. And I don't know how much longer we're going to ask tho, those people to endure that. And I know I'm not speaking on behalf of a huge political constituency here, but I, I think a lot of times, whether it's, it's the public or whether it's in government, a lot of times the folks who are ignored are the little guys. They're the ones out there, the grunts, they're the one out there, you know, lassin' around on the floor with a prisoner, and do whatever they have to subject themselves to. But I just want, I want to tell you, I'm not going to be difficult, but I'm not going to sit here another year and do nothing while those people work in those conditions. So, I anxiously await the, the recommendations.
All right. I mean, I think we all echo the same concerns. However, we do have the fiduciary responsibility to look after the taxpayer too. And I think everybody's concerned about staff. Nobody's not concerned about staff. But we're also concerned about the impact to the taxes, the impact to the voters, impact to staff, and we've got to get it right. That's my, that's my point of view in it. And I think taking a little bit of time to do that, and I hope staff at the jail understands that if we get it right, it makes their life safer, better, for a longer period of time, and it's, and we fulfill our obligations as a taxpayer as well.
And I agree with that.
And thank everybody on your committee and yourself for volunteering to serve on the committee, to help make things better. Please do that.
And I will. And, and just, I mean, these are people that have volunteered a great amount of their time to look into this. That is sort of above and beyond what their, what their job is. So, um-
Judge, just make sure and thank everybody.
Yes, sir. I will, I will. And, and I will tell you, it's nobody's intention on that committee to be adversarial. I think everybody on that committee will concur with what Commissioner Johnson said, that, that something does need to be addressed. I think all they want to do is, I think, first of all, they feel appreciative that they have the opportunity to put their, their input in. And, second of all, I think all they want to do is, is be involved in the process and be able to help if they can. So, I appreciate-
Hey, I think the hand wringing ended two months ago, or whatever, when we formed this committee to, to come up and, and, and give some solid recommendations. You know, I mean, w- w- we heard briefings from, from the Sheriff's Department about what the numbers were, but it was a lot of hand wringing and nothing got done. Stuff is get, happening. I'm happy, we're moving in the right direction. I'm convinced there's a, this, this phase of it will end and we will take action. So, thanks a bunch, and I appreciate you coming by and giving us an update.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We table this for one month? Or do we need to vote on it?
I would say, I would like to table it until, at a minimum, until this committee makes their recommendation.
A motion.
That's a motion. Which, and I think, he said he would, it'd take two months, so we're looking at a second meeting in September.
Well, I, I'm going to support the motion, but I'm going to get this off on my chest. I am not going to sit here and be lectured to about looking after county commission, after the taxpayers' money in regard to this jail. For three years, we have squirreled away money. Countless times, people have walked during the budget process and through the budget year have walked through the front door of my store and asked for county money, and I told them no, because I knew we had to build a jail. And I'm not going to sit here, and because I advocate moving ahead because of my concern for the, the well-being of people that handle that jail over there, that I'm anything less than, than careful with taxpayers' money. And I, and I know part of that job falls with me as chairman, but I'll put the number of times I've set eyeball to eyeball and said no to people for something they wanted, and we couldn't give them an increase in their budget, or we couldn't make some special appropriation, because it was my desire to do what we needed to do about that jail, and get to the point where we could do it without raising taxes. And if somebody wants to come here to make a proposal, let's get on with it. But it's been three years, for heaven's sakes. It's been three years.
But I don't think anybody's lecturing you. And I know you're talking about me, but you're one of five people that's got the responsibility to look after the taxpayers and the staff in this county.
I've done that.
And the point is, it's our job to do it right. And we need to run the county from Center Street, not Shelton Avenue. So, if they come in your store and they're bothering you, tell them to come up here.
I'll send them to see you, Mr. Matt.
No, send them up here to see the county manager, and we'll deal with it on an official basis like this. But I'm not lecturing you. I'm looking, I'm doing my job as a county commissioner, just like you should do, and you're one of five members, and this board by majority will make the decisions, not you.
But they come, they come to see the chairman, and I said, you can come if you like, but I will not support it. I will not recommend it to the board.
And that's your choice. You're one vote.
Right.
We're all one vote. We're all a team trying to look after staff and the citizens of this county at the same time.
Can I have a motion on the floor?
Okay. All right. Motion to delay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Next item is item J, it's a request for designation of a voting delegate to the NCACC Annual Conference. And this is going to be held August 14th through the 17th in Buncombe County. I believe Commissioner Griffith will be there the day of the voting.
I make a motion, we designate Commissioner Griffin for that delegate.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Next item is a request from Tax Administration to approve refunds and releases for June. These seem to be in order, and there are no county commissioners' names on the reports.
All in favor, vote for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
This is item 15, or memo 15A. This is, I'm going to do this before the minutes. This is the item that we added. Request to approve sanitary sewer and pump station easement between Arden County and B.B. Belk Jr. And Bill Pope, if you don't mind making this request.
I'd be glad to. Mr. Chairman, I'll remind the commission that we build a lot of schools in Arden County with cops-type financing. Part of that financing involved- Part of that financing involved transferring the ownership of the schools actually back to the county. Except in those situations, the schools are owned by the school board. So what we did was, when we were doing the COPS financing, was we transferred the ownership of the facilities back to the county, leased them to the school system for a dollar a year, something like that, and then conveyed a lien on the property to secure the bonds. One of those facilities was Lake Norman High School. That facility's now owned by the county, Mr. Belk, who owns adjacent property, desires to develop his property, and he needs sewer easement across that, that Lake Norman High School property. To do that, the school people have negotiated with Mr. Belk and agreed to grant him a sewer easement upon a payment of fifteen thousand dollars for the consideration for the easement. The bond trustee has approved the transaction and has signed a release, releasing the easement from the lien of the mortgage. I got, I prepared the document myself after the school people negotiated the terms of it, and then I procured the signature of the chairman, and after I did that, I realized that more than likely the board ought to approve this, and so I'll bring it to you today to, I ask you to ratify the execution of the easement, granting of this easement, this sewer easement.
Okay. The request is to vote and approve this easement. Any discussion on that request? The floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And item L, a request for approval of the minutes for May twenty-seventh, June third, and June seventeen.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Vice Chairman Norman, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. Appointments to boards and commissions, we have none this evening, any unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Actually, we did have one appointment to the boards and commissions under the inmate reduction committee.
Right.
That would be memo seventeen.
I don't have a memo seventeen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can't remember where I see it, and I can't find mine either.
That's fine.
For that one, I'll, since Zordi is working on it, I would like to nominate General Mallory for that committee.
Have a nomination, James Mallory, any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Mallory by a commission, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, now any unfinished business? Public comment, period? New business?
I had a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Ron, after reading the article in Monday's paper about the EMS response times, I wanted a couple of questions. Number one is, how accurate is the assertion that EMS is unavailable to respond to calls for five hours a day? And number two, if that's inaccurate, can you explain, or have staff explain publicly, just for public service reasons, that if the three EMS units are busy handling calls on amelances, what is our other responding protocols for the citizens?
I'll take this, but I do have David Clower and Steve Mooney in, in the audience, both with EMS, if I fumble, so just jump up and come on up here. First question, I, I think that the five hours a day is, is inaccurate. That is, we have three units in, in our Statesville base, and basically, when all three of those units are called out, they may be in varying, in varying degrees of call out, they may be in, one may be coming back in, one may be in, at the hospital, one may be treating a patient. So it's not that uncommon that the three of those would be on a call of some description. However, we have multiple layers of backup to cover in those, in those circumstances. We have our specialty services trucks that run convalescent care that can be used as a backup. We have posting from various bases close to Statesville that if those three units in Statesville are on a call, then they will post. Troutman, Perth Road, Trinity, bases such as that will post and come closer to, to the city to cover in the event of a call. The rescue squad, we have supervisors that can hop in a, a QRV or hop in the back of a rescue squad vehicle and perform advanced life support. So it's kind of a long-winded answer to say that yes or, or no, five hours is, that's an, that's an inaccurate number. We do get busy, we do have all trucks out, but we have, have multiple ways to cover that.
Okay. And I wanted to say too, that if I may, since Monday, I've had the opportunity to speak to Chief Hutchins at the Stateful Fire Department, he's here tonight, and I realize the information was not intended the way it was presented, and I know the chief, and he wouldn't have intended to imply that the citizens were not covered. The purpose of their trying out some new procedures for the city is to better serve the citizens of Statesville. I believe this can be accomplished without changing any rescue districts, so this would not affect the Iredell Rescue Squad or any volunteer fire departments that respond into the city adversely. I recommend that you, Ron, if you could, and staff, get with the city staff and the city manager to assist Chief Hutchins and the city in, in their future endeavors, to be ready for our winter retreat and helping talk about the impacts and their desires and things like that. I would not personally support, and I don't think it's the county's position nor the board's position, if I'm wrong, correct me, to change any existing rescue districts nor change the funding formulas that we have. However, as a taxpayer and a citizen in Statesville, in twenty-six years or more of emergency services experience, you can never have too many people responding to a, a emergency in any area of the county. And, and I know their desire is only to better serve the citizens of the county, and, and I know they have the chief and the city, and all departments in the county have a great working relationship. I just wanted to clear up that and thank the chief. He has contacted staff and, and the commissioners and apologized for any misunderstandings because the citizens were concerned about that, because I know him, he's a great man, and staff and, and the county get along great with him. So I look forward to you guys, hopefully with the consent of the board, to work either in a formal committee or informally, in your normal job positions, to work towards coming with us toward the winter retreat with some ideas. But I don't think, and I don't want anybody to be misunderstanding, that I don't think it's the board's desire nor the county's position to change any rescue districts nor the formula in which the rescue squads nor the volunteer fire departments are funded.
This board, this board was very clear not very long ago that we would not change rescue districts north of Troutman.
Period.
Period.
And I've not changed.
I have not either.
I think you have to make a distinction here between a rescue district and what the city is an autonomous, or city council's an autonomously elected board can elect to do.
Sure.
Oh, they can elect to do that.
I understand, but I'm saying you got to make a distinction there.
Well, I just, yeah, I mean, my, my, go ahead.
Okay. We can abide by our decision not to grant another rescue district, but if it is their desire to address what they think are the legitimate needs in terms of public safety for their citizens, I think we're compelled to, to work with them. Now, I spoke, I spoke to Mr. Hutchins, I believe, last Thursday, and I spoke to Larry Presley Friday, and asked them if they would, if they would make themselves available, or if, I asked Mr. Presley if he would make Mr. Hutchins and his staff available at our fall or winter planning, to brief us on where they are in the process, and what their intent was long-term, and, and they've agreed to do that. And I think Mr. Smith has appointed Mr. David Salibi and Mr. Presley, and the chief have agreed to include Mr. Salibi in any meetings that they have. I think what we're going to have to do is, we're going to have to rely upon our staff at some point, because the issue between who is going to answer calls and which calls are going to be asked can dealt, be dealt with largely in your dispatch protocol. Understanding that whoever's at the console and EMS at some point in the process is going to make a judgment, is to who to dispatch, whether to dispatch everybody, and they're trained to do that, and we're going to have to trust them with their training to do it. But protocols can be established so that we don't needlessly dispatch agencies, but that we dispatch whoever's needed. So I, I think that's probably the best path forward, and I do know that, that rescue squads are funded, part of their funding is based on the area served, and part of it is on the number of calls that they run. And that's a separate issue, we can decide later how we're going to do that, and that's the reason that we have asked the city to give us at least a year's notice before the full implementation of this plan, so that we can deal with it through the budgetary process. Now, having said that, I do think because of the downturn in the economy, one can make an argument that if there had not been a downturn in the economy, the rescue squads would be receiving additional funding over what they, what they are now. So if there, if, through the dispatch protocols and the budget process, this, this may be an opportunity to give them some relief as far as the stress on their equipment, without harming them financially. But I think this is a process that we need to, that we need to approach cautiously, and I think that as many people who are going to be impacted by the decisions should be included in, in the meetings on the front end. And when it comes to emergency services, I'm going to be the first to admit that there's a whole lot of people in this room smarter than I am, and let them work this thing out as far as the dispatch protocols, and who's going to answer to what, and who's going to do what, and come back to us with a recommendation.
But one reason that we're even having this discussion is because what was reported in the paper was not accurate, so we're talking about fixing a problem that actually doesn't exist.
And that's my point, is, is it's not intended in any, in any effort to be adversarial, we're just rectifying the situation, and, and by no means am I recommending that we tell the city what they can and can't do. My point was, is to give the city and the chief some clear guidance as to what the board's position is as to creating a, a new district and...
Funding.
And funding, that, that would go along with that, because I think there's a misunderstanding that, that we had, we might would have a desire to change those districts, and, and in turn, it would affect the funding. So the, as far as the response protocols, like I said, with my experience, you know, for example, you get a wreck, you dispatch police, fire, EMS, and rescue. Rescue's there to extricate, the fire can do multiple tasks, the fire's there to put out a fire potential flammable situation, EMS transport and treats your injured, and police does report. So sometimes you're going to have an overlap, and as a citizen, and with my background in law enforcement, that's not a bad thing. You never know in an emergency what you're going to need until you get there, and it's too late to dispatch somebody that's away. So it's not my intent to tell the city or discourage the city from responding to calls within the city, that's their prerogative. My, my point as a commissioner is, I personally don't think the, the process is broken, and I don't think the process needs to change, and that means the protocols wouldn't have to change for them to continue doing whatever their desire is.
I think we can establish that EMS is not broken, and it looks like that there's at least some willingness or desire on the part of the city to begin to run first responder calls inside the city length. And Mr. Salibi is going to coordinate that between the county agencies and the city agencies, and I'm sure Mr. Hutchins did not leave any slight toward the EMS when he made that statement, I've known him for a good while, and he's a fine fellow, and I told him on the phone the other day, I have a plaque on the back wall of my store, says you have the right to remain silent, if you choose not to exercise your right, your words will be twisted and used against you. And, and a lot of people took some of the umbrage at what he said, but it was unfortunate, and I know that that was not the intent. I just want to, I just want to make everyone aware that, that the city and county wish to work together on this, and it is the city's desire to do this irrespective of a service district. And I think as far as dispatch protocols and working with the rescue squad, for instance, the city of Statesville, my understanding, has no desire to get into heavy rescue, they're going to do light and medium. Now, we made a decision that we would go by the state definition of light, medium, and heavy, so there'd be no misunderstanding as to what type of equipment was necessary. And I think we'll have to come to an understanding with the city also in a whole number of things, and I, I think our staff can do that. And I do appreciate the job EMS does, and Chief, we appreciate the job you do inside the city, and we look forward to working with you to that end. Okay? Anything else on the new business? County managers report.
Couple of, well, two follow-up items. One is, I mentioned at a previous meeting that we were going to be installing AEDs in all of, well, many of our buildings, and we are hoping to have that done by the end of the month, that's one of our goals. And as far as the legislative goals, we talked about via email, gave you an update, we will probably be presenting something to you, probably at the August fifth meeting, I've been soliciting information from the staff as well as the school and superintendents, so just an update.
Okay. Is that all you have, sir?
Yes.
If there's nothing else, I would move we go into closed session for Economic Development, 143-318-11A4, Attorney Client, 143-318-11A3, and Personnel, 143-318-11A6. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye.[472.69]
Okay. All right. There'll be res- there will be action taken as a result of our closed session and the floor's open for a motion. I believe Vice Chairman Norman has a motion prepared.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion that we move the county manager who's agreed ninety-six in step seventeen to step twenty-seven. And it will remain the same on this matter since travel money.
Travel. Okay. Can you discuss some of that motion? Seventeen to twenty-seven. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. I believe Mr. Halt carries the motion.
First motion I have, I have four. First motion I'd like to make is motion to call for a public hearing on August fifth, two thousand and fourteen at seven P. M. Regarding an economic development incentive for the amount of eighty-four thousand seven eleven over a five-year period for the project Porter, based on a five million dollar investment to Iredell County.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Halt.
The next motion I'd like to make would be called for a public hearing also on August fifth at seven P. M. Regarding an economic development incentive of sixty thousand eight seventy-eight over a five-year period for project deal, based on a three point five million dollar investment to Iredell County.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to make a next motion to call for a public hearing on August fifth, two thousand and fourteen at seven P. M. Regarding an economic development incentive in the amount of fifty-two thousand nine thirty-three over a five-year period for project B K R, based on a three million dollar investment to Iredell County.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. If there's no other...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we continue this meeting at six o'clock P. M. on Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, for a dinner engagement with the Cooperative Extension Service located at four forty-four Bristol Drive in Statesville. Purpose of the event will be to hear a presentation, report to the people from the Cooperative Extension staff.
Okay. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're good, right?
We're good.